Regular meeting of the Nevada City Council, the order Monday, October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two at six o'clock P. M. Can we get a roll call, please?
He is.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Gag.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
First up is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason Dane, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. Agenda is approved, we'll move to the public hearing, the public hearing is on the proposal to vacate and convey city property. And we will open that public hearing, did we receive any written or oral comment? No comments are received, is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding vacation of city property? Then we'll close the public hearing, move to resolution number forty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. A resolution to vacate and convey an alleyway adjoining block twelve in Burris Edition in the city of Nevada, Iowa.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve, Sandy, any discussion on that?
My discussion would be, it should be nice to have a map, some of the other stuff in our, in our packet. Because if you haven't, I've lived here my whole life and I still had to look it up, figure it out and go drive by to see what it was. It'd be nice to have a map of this sort of stuff, so, I mean, maybe it's just being lazy, but.
Nope, I'd agree.
Yeah.
Fair request.
That has that noted, any other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, next item is consent agenda, any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Brian, any discussion on consent? Seeing none, council, please vote. Hey, that is approved, takes us to the public forum, time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. We do have a request from Don Arons to address you, so Don will ask you to go up to the microphone over there and state your name and address for the record and address the council.
My name is Don Arons, I am living at two thousand and fourteen Jashalita Drive, I just built a house there two years ago. Um, I, I'm here tonight to build advocacy from the board. Because I, I'm not really addressing the, I'm not anti the rezoning anymore, I've come to the grips with the fact that that's going to be rezoned. Okay, I get that, I just want to talk about some things that I would like to have happen there. So these, these you guys have heard at once, even though it's, my time is better used at the development meeting, I understand that. So let's first probably build some consensus, if you guys don't mind, raise your hand if you disagree with these statements, just raise your hand if you disagree. Let's start off with an easy one, do you agree that the sun sets in the west? Disagree, raise your hand, okay. Do you, do you agree that the residents of Jashalita bought property there do much to the serene, open and countryside environment?
I don't know if I can comment on that, I don't know what.
I can, I spoke to all my neighbors, that's, in fact, some of them are distraught, and they've given up because they know that this process is probably done.
And I don't think council needs to actually participate in this, but go ahead with your commentary.
Um, do you agree that leading next to an open agricultural plot is more peaceful than a construction zone? Do you agree that lights shining into your bedroom window impact your peace of mind? Do you agree that if given the choice, it's better to negatively impact no one's quality of life rather than even just one's, given the choice? Okay, I'm here to ask that you respect those of us who moved to or built on Jashalita Drive. I am not petitioning against any zoning change, I've understood, I'm not going against it, that ship has sailed. I'm asking you to respect your constituents whose quality of life will be impacted. Specifically, I'm requesting two things, one, I'm going to ask that you give full consideration. The other, I have and must, I must in good conscience actually demand this one, and I don't know what, what power I have to demand, I'm just a citizen. The one I want full consideration for is I asked the city to consider planting next spring a tree line along the east side of the development from the barn to north of the Jashalita properties. You guys, I requested you all have page nine handy. I sent an email to you to have page nine handy, hopefully you're looking at that. So I'm hoping that you would consider building a tree line or planting a tree line. That's going to be a more natural view for those of us who went out there and wanted to live out in the countryside feel. Um, it's going to be more eco-friendly, everyone loves trees. So God's natural humanity partner, they breathe out the stuff we breathe in, we breathe out the stuff they breathe in, so that's kind of cool to have trees out there. Um, it'll serve as a sound barrier for both Jashalita against the construction that's coming our way. And it will serve as a sound barrier for people who move there against the traffic coming down Fifth Street. Win-win, I think. Um, it would enhance the doing developed properties along the east side as well, I think people are more willing to move into homes, lots that have some trees already growing in them rather than empty space. Um, and this would also serve my second request, a request that I have to demand on behalf of myself, my wife and my immediate neighbors. Please look at page nine of the development agreement if you're not already looking at it. Note the access road to Fifth Street which comes to the back of the houses on Jashalita. More directly, it comes to my backyard, I live in that empty lot. There's not an empty lot there anymore. My, my bedroom faces Fifth Street. And it's, my house was built on a hill, I invited some of you to come to see my house, Ray has. In fact, Ray's been awesome during this whole process, been a fountain of information. Has dealt with me really professionally everywhere, shape and form, you got a good man there, um. He knows what it looks like out there, they built my house on a hill basically when the builder did this, yeah, I didn't tell him to build it really high, but he did, and so I can see right on my privacy fence. Every road, that road coming in comes right to my backyard, I will have every light in early morning and late night coming into my bedroom. So I, like other residents here, sleep at the back of those homes, early morning and late evening traffic would shine into our bedrooms. As precedence, I'm not sure there's another property in the city which has a road leading to the back of the house. I don't think the developer of Jashalita actually thought that might actually happen someday, but it is. Um, I've not done an exhaustive search, but I think that's probably the way it is. Um, I think it's probably common sense even, not to build a road to the back of someone's house where they sleep. I'm not sure what developer would impact someone's quality of life to that extent, it really does come down to peace of mind. Um, I invited Barb to come out and take a look, I sent her an email, I invite you all. Anybody who want to come out and see my property and see why I rode right there, which plan on the preliminary would have such an impact on my life, I invite you to come out and take a look. Um, so my proposal is no Fifth Street access from the new development to such time the development grows to the north. At which time the access can be constructed far enough north that no Jashalita always leading through the intrusive east-facing car and streetlights. That's all I'm asking. You know, the city's going to benefit from that property being rezoned. Can you at least do the best you can to restrict its impact on the people who live at Jashalita whose bedrooms face that, uh, road? Um, benefits of the proposed stipulation, and again, I don't know if you guys can stipulate that, I'm hoping you can, you can stipulate to developer, he's right, a road shouldn't be there, just go a little farther north. Um, I, i- if you do that, I think you're going to have maybe the loss of one lot in that entire development. And I think you're going to have two lots that gain in such value that it might make up for that. The two lots that are going to be blocked off where that fifth street access is right now, the southern part of that. I think if you get rid of that, you're going to have two big lots there that could probably command a little more price than they would naturally occur, uh, occur, um. The tree line serves as green space and noise reducer enhancing the value of the lots as well, so I think those, all those lots with the tree line in back there, people were probably more interested in those. And it will acknowledge the concerns of some Jashalita residents, which I think is important that any city does to their people who have made choices to live here and make the investment they have in those homes. It was hard for me and my wife, I've been a lifelong educator, I'm not rich. My wife's been a lifelong, lifelong public servant also, paralegal and now works at Story County Medical. We're not rich, we put a lot of our lifetime money into building there. Um, and the fact that I might, I think I might lose sleep is really, really painful. Really painful that I could lose sleep because all those lights coming up and shining into our back window. So I don't know if you can stipulate that, that tonight, I don't know enough about the process, I just, I just want you to know that so I feel like I have somebody on my side. Uh, this is an eminently reasonable request, even increasing the value of some lots in the new development. I built my home believing it would be the home I would die in, I've surrendered to your definition of progress, I probably won't die there now, but I'd sure like to live there for a little longer. Um, because I cannot surrender my sleep too, I cannot surrender my sleep, thank you guys.
Counsel, anything for Mr.?
I do have a proposal of what I, I drew out, I don't know if this is the right place to show you. All I am hoping for, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous, I'm chasing here, and I used to speak in front of, that's kind of what I'm looking at for the development. Tree line, I live right there, that's my bedroom in the dark right there. This road right now is trying to go right here. That road right now is planted in the preliminary, it's got credit here, he said it's preliminary. Scott Henry's been great to talk to too, he's always been straightforward and honest with us. So it goes right here, and I'm asking for a tree line right there, and this road to curve and maybe you make that little circle, so maybe almost a mini cul-de-sac.
Can we have that?
Like such a difficult thing at this point, at this junction, to make that happen?
So, so what about all the other people that have headlights shining in their homes at night, do we have to plant a tree line for them too then?
Yeah.
I drove round town, Ray, you can help me out here, I think you tried to look at this too.
I don't think anybody's. Just Ryan, by the way.
Fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, geez. Okay.
You can call me.
That opening, you can call me Ray, you can call me Jay.
So I, I appreciate what you're saying, but.
But, hang on. I believe you went around, you've been trying to look for homes or think about homes that have this situation, I think you came up with one. I've driven around, I haven't seen it, of course, there's people on corners that have passing lights quickly. But we're talking about how a car driving right here will probably start giving up the lights all the way. Such a simple change to me, such a simple change.
I understand.
And as far as process goes, the plat will have to go through planning and zoning when it's final, correct?
That's correct, so right now it's just in the rezoning phase.
All I wanted was that, all along, with someone to say, we get you, we hear you, do your thing.
No, we've total, we've absolutely noted your comments for this evening. Um, and as we get through that site plan process and flat approval, we'll have more input and I would encourage you to, to come back.
Oh, definitely, I'll be here every time I have a chance to be with, with whatsoever going on. But.
Appreciate your.
If you have any power to stipulate that to the developer to say, yes, you're going to make that road curve there and come, come to have access north of the Jashalita properties.
So there, there are certain things that the city can, can request of the developer, as long as they're compliant with what's in, currently in the tables and the code, in the zoning code. Um, we, we don't have a lot of flexibility in saying that they have to do additional measures, there is some.
Okay, how much money did you give them?
The developer? Um, what was in the development agreement?
Zero right now.
What, what's, what's the plan, I read the plan.
Uh, in the development agreement, there is a five hundred thousand for the first year after the, the, um, infrastructure is complete. A year after that, another five hundred, and if they complete so many houses, they will receive an, an additional amount.
So, in that kind of investment, I hope the city has a little say, give them that kind of money, a little say to say, yes, this is a reasonable, eminently reasonable request. Shift it, that's all, come on.
And I do thank you for positively working through this and the neighbors too, and I think we've been noting different questions and concerns and staff has been working with the developers, so appreciate you voicing your opinion on that. Is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Seeing none, we will close the public forum, move into old business number ten thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter fifty-five of the city code of ordinances of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand and twenty-two to allow the keeping of bees in the city, third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Dane, discussion?
I'm working to decide whether I need to suggest that the flight path barrier be put back in. For five. Again, I still wasn't here at the original time, so we pulled that away, but there was information in the packet plus, um, other things I've heard since then from others. Suggesting that if you can, you can get the bees to be up, that's, that keeps them happier and humans as well. Um, the other thing that we didn't talk about last time that I brought up in passing was a way to register the hives. Some of the, some of the cities that have a specific beekeeping ordinance have that, it's just a part of that, just not a dog license, but it's like just knowing where they are. So I'm.
And on the flight path barrier, one thing too is maybe a distance as an alternative, because a situation like Lance's where there's not a, another house right, right on the property line is different than potentially someone could put them at a property line that has a neighbor ten feet away. Yeah, and if you, you'll come up here to the microphone.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, yeah, because part of it is this situation is handled really well, I think, as far as their intention to be good neighbors. It's future, um, and again, don't expect everyone to get into beekeeping, so it probably won't be a problem, but you always have to think about what if they do. Um, because in their situation, forcing a fence may not be appropriate, but if there's somebody that has a lot shorter distance, maybe it is. So that was something I've been brainstorming, go ahead.
The, the barrier should not be necessary with the amount of distance from a property line that you said. Do, because like within ten feet, the bees are already like eight foot or above in there.
Yeah, we would love anybody's, we still invite you all to come watch them when, and they're out on warm days right now and cold days they're in. But when they fly, they approach their hive from up here anyway. Like that's just how they come down into their hives, they don't come straight at their.
Because of the distance that they fly, they stay at a high altitude, you know, a higher altitude above tree lines.
But it does seem unnecessary to us as beekeepers observing bees, they don't fly at their hives at the height of the hive entrance, they come down already, like at an angle usually when they approach. And we did talk to the concerned neighbor, Lance went and, and I went and we think of that.
As long as.
Resolved in a neighborly way that hopefully. So.
It was just like, it was an anomaly that we didn't think about with the pool. But, uh, it should be fine with us having water source, and part of it may have been the chlor, chlorination of the pool was said, I think she said might not have been proper. Which could have encouraged them to drink it.
Of previous years, so, I don't know. Way from chlorine, but. Yeah, so I, and so I could see like you got property lines that are close to each other. But I think that even still, the bees are going to come from up above to go down to their. They're, they don't, like they, they're trying to avoid obstacles already, and so I don't feel like they're naturally inclined. And I read that study that was in the packet, and I thought that was a lot of science mumbo jumbo, but one of the first paragraphs talks about how it wasn't as effective as they thought it would be, their study.
Right, right.
So, I was.
So Erin, if we want to make a change to this ordinance, do we have to break from the third reading and bring it back?
So we had this conversation with the last change, um. I, I would take the position on this particular one because these are both provisions, both the one that was added last time. And what we're considering now, we're in the first draft that was presented. Um, and public had the opportunity to have input, I would take the position that this would not be required to start over, um, only for that reason.
So we could.
But if Barb wanted to register something, you probably.
That would be something entirely new, yeah, and we would start the process over.
The distancing, I don't know, I read that too. But I'm not, I think maybe it registration, I mean, I don't know that there needs to be a fee, or maybe there does, I don't know, but I think it's a good idea to maybe keep track of who's got bees in town. I mean, the, I'm sure you guys don't care that we know, we already know, you know, but I'm just saying.
We're not hiding them.
Like you say, not everyone's going to just start beekeeping, but do we let somebody move a big colony into the north side of town, we don't know about it till eight months later because we don't have any provision to.
Well.
To register.
Uh, has no regulations at all, and I don't think that they have any problems either, and there are much bigger towns, so I don't know how much of worry it really would be.
I mean, one thing you could do is approve the third reading as it currently sits tonight, and then, since we don't have language to add in on that anyways, we could then go back with an amendment and go through the process again with that amendment. At least we would have.
Think it's appropriate.
Right, at least we would have the code language in place.
Okay, okay.
I think we go ahead and, like we discussed last month or last meeting, just go ahead and let's get this going and see how it goes, can always come back.
Yeah.
And things.
Yeah, do an amendment if we need to. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Other discussion?
Bog for mosquitoes, I know that, when that comes up.
Um, so part of the motivation to get it all in our city is the, um, I want beekeepers, it's hard to register within, you have to have it.
And. Spray it.
So we, I mean, we would, I really like to have some things not sprayed near the. Yeah, there are things that we can't register for because it's not yet, I mean, hopefully after tonight, it will.
Well, that might answer the registry then, that's all we'd need, if they register the estate, we, we can have that access.
Oh, yeah, that's. Either that or with animal control, like dog or cat, and I can keep a list internally, but. Okay, but we'll work through that piece, but it sounds like no other discussion on the ordinance language in front of you tonight. Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes to ordinance number ten thirty-five, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and ordinance amending this code of ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand and five. By adding chapter one fifty-nine vacant property to establish a vacant property code registration and maintenance program, third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, um, goes to C, resolution number forty-five, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, resolution approving the Camelot Theater Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy, discussion? None, council, please vote. Approved, goes to B, approved pay request number four for the fieldhouse from HPC LLC in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Approved.
Sorry, Barb, Steve, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Approved, um, goes to E, approved pay request number three for two thousand and twenty-two street improvements project from Nats. In the amount of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-one cents.
Move to approve. Second.
Steve, Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, goes to F, Nevada Foundation Human Services Grant Funding Process and Procedures.
Move to approve.
Barbie, any discussion? Never proved, we will be finding two of you that would like to serve on the committee to review. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. And that is approved. Um, takes us to new business, uh, new business A, resolution number forty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, resolution deleting property from the Nevada urban renewal area.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Brian, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, goes to B, ordinance number ten thirty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. An ordinance deleting property from the tax increment financing district for the Nevada urban renewal area of the city of Nevada, Iowa. Pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the code of Iowa, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Sandy, discussion on that? None, council, please vote. Approved, goes to C, resolution number forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, setting date for public hearing on designation of the expanded Nevada urban renewal area and on urban renewal plan amendment.
Approve.
Second.
Dane, Steve, discussion? None, council, please vote. And is approved, goes to D, resolution number forty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, resolution to approve or buy a wastewater agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Barb, discussion on that? None, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to E, ordinance number ten thirty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter sixty-five, stopper yield required for additional stop sign on fourteenth street. And yield signs on J Avenue and chapter sixty-nine, parking regulations for no parking on south side of H Avenue between tenth and fifteenth streets, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb, Brian, discussion on that?
I'm assuming with this, we'll put all new signage and everything up on that. What was that, I'm assuming we'll have all brand new signage and everything on that old street for no parking and everything.
Yeah, we'll do that, do that, there's already no parking all the way up to tenth street anyway, so we will be able to add the no parking from tenth to fifteenth. We'll add the, the yield signs as well, and then Joe has a pretty good plan on, uh, what he's going to do to make it more visible next year for kids walking down J as well.
And I had a question too, I know that was pursuant to the school requesting us to look at that quarter, do we expect more changes potentially, or is this? Um, it at this time?
I believe that this is it for this time, these were, um, these were the areas that were addressed during that school meeting that we, we talked about over a year ago. Um, so this should be good, the other things that we talked about were creating more awareness around those, those intersections. What Joe's planning on doing is he's going to be painting basically bars, um, colored bars. I think we decided on purple to match the school color, uh, to basically show that there is awareness that it was going to be some sort of a crosswalk. Plus the yield signs will help with that, um, the no parking will also help on, on H Avenue. Um, he's going to continue to do the back paths and we're going to look at other areas for that as well to designate for. But if there are other things that come up, that's something that we definitely can discuss and work to make changes on.
Anything else?
And it goes in line with that, we, it's not on here, but we need to look at a crosswalk at, uh, eleventh crossing over H. Right by, near Steve's house there, and, uh.
I just.
No crosswalk there, and there's a lot of kids that walk there.
Come through his driveway.
Not on the east side of eleventh, right?
Yeah. signage too, with signage. And a LED sign would be nice or something for kids to hit it.
Yeah, I mean, even in the summer, it's extremely busy, you have kids crossing there, going to the, the pool and, and everything, so, um. Yeah, it would be nice if we had, had something up.
Out for the question.
Sounds good. Counsel, please vote. That is approved, takes us to F, approve renewal of class C liquor license and outdoor service, Sunday service permit for Jessica and Scott Walkner, DBA Do U Bowl Two. Twelve twenty-nine, twelfth street, effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Largely.
Dane, Jason, discussion? None, council, please vote. Is approved, takes us to G, neighborhood improvement incentive program application number two, Farmer Felt Homes, Sun Ridge Estates, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb, Brian, discussion?
You're at the end of this?
I think we're getting pretty close, how many houses was that one for?
Uh, that was for, uh, there's a couple more left, so.
So that makes seventeen, that is, he's removed so far, because the last one was for eight.
Yeah. Three more that I can see, information on invoices. This process, so. Quite a long, um. I can date the friends.
I mean.
Just a little bit of gumption. Just a little bit of gumption. Goes a long way.
Hey, anything else? None, council please vote. That is approved, goes to H, approved purchase of skid loader for streets department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy, discussion?
We need to be careful about the discrepancy, discrepancy in the price. It's eight percent and ours is another discrepancy five. For. For buying, for not taking the low bid.
For which, oh, for the, uh.
Skid loader?
Oh.
Quite a difference in trade value, which I think is probably most of the price difference.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I think it's five percent, isn't it, Aaron?
On your purchasing policy? Yeah.
So do we have to? I mean, I think we've done it before, haven't we?
You have, and usually there's just some overarching rationale for some difference in the equipment that's.
You know, I think we can make that argument.
Or servicing of the equipment that makes it.
Or being local.
Long, yeah, the long.
So we don't need to do anything special, we can just go ahead and approve it.
No.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
Anything else on that? You probably actually need to motions, I think.
Jason, already.
Oh, we did, we already moved, okay, just making sure. Okay, thank council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to I, approved purchase of indoor play equipment for field house.
Move to approve option one.
Second.
Okay, Dane? Brian, Tim's coming up, so. Rhonda?
He's been working hard on this one.
So we put an action form in your, in your packet tonight, um, with a lot of the detail. This has been a extremely lengthy process, we've been at this for well over a year to try and, uh. Get this narrowed down and part of the challenge was finding companies that could actually do this and fit our space, so. Um, what you have before you tonight is, uh, is an action form with our recommendation, uh, as well as a park board. And I'll let Rhonda give you a little more detail, she's the one that has really, um, been working on this most of the time, so. Um, I'll let her, uh, share a little bit of information with you and we'll answer questions if you can.
So just a, a couple of things is the. It, this playpiece actually has two different components to it, one is. Um, a standard indoor play piece that's enclosed, it really does with our unique space, um, help us. Have a lot of usable space, so that's something that you would find in an indoor play area. Um, like Tim said, it's kind of a unique space, it is, we, we had to do a lot of, of figuring out to make it work within. Um, the area that we had, and then we also added in kind of a, a rock and a tree stump with a climbing thing there, so this, this is for ages two to twelve. Um, we can probably fit about forty-five people on both. Playpieces, it's weight based, um, for the indoor component, and, um. You know, we're with, we're happy with how it, how it turned out, the, the concept was to bring the, kind of bring the outdoors in. With a clubhouse feel, field house, it all ties together, the colors tie together with the, the theme of the building, um. Like, like Tim said, we're happy with how it turned out, and we, uh. We hope that this is something that you'll consider us to, to move forward with.
Council, anything for Tim and Rhonda?
Um, what are they talking about delivery? I mean, we ain't gonna be ready for it for a year.
Right, so we've worked out that they will, um, the companies that we're working with, which is. I play Coen themed concepts, they are going to keep, uh, keep the equipment, and they're gonna set up the. The manufacturing date based upon, you know, when, when we need it, and so they're gonna keep it, it's, the manufacturing date will be just before. We'll, we'll need it and, and we won't have to store it or anything like that. So the, um, the I play Co piece is stick built, so they'll come in, they'll install it, uh, there, so. But having it, it, it won't be sitting around, I guess, just to answer your question.
Then I'm assuming even though this quote's expired, that they're still gonna honor this price.
Right, so, so I worked that out with them, um, to get them to keep, they changed the quote on us, and, um, I asked them to. To keep this good through October thirty-first, and that's what, what they did. Yep. So I know that that was expired on this quote, but it's all an email writing that we have.
Else?
Done in November. And the pieces goes up.
Thank you for working so hard on it, I think it'll be a really popular amenity in town. Seeing no other discussion, council please vote. And that is approved, takes us to report, starting with city administrator.
All right, um, aside from my regular standing meetings that I have weekly, I had a policy review with Greg Picklap, who's out of ADC. Um, we typically have those. Really every year mainly. Um, just so we can discuss things up at the, the state when, when we get there. Uh, leadership, had leader, had leadership last week, we graduate in November, so that's exciting, hard to believe it's already done and over. At Story County Economic Development Summit this last week as well, and that was, that was, or two weeks ago, and that was pretty fun, um. A lot of different people that were there, so that was great to, to be there, and then our Nevada recap. Going over plans on how we can keep that going for the, the future years and moving forward with that. Other than that. Unless you have questions on my report, I'm, I don't.
Thanks. And moving on to my report, just had a few things, um, one that I participated in was. Main Street had a international visitor come in from Japan looking at the Main Street programs and got to show. Um, what Nevada is doing and. Sneak is, um, he's a researcher, so he's been researching the Main Street America program and things about that, so we'll get. Report of his findings when it's done, and then also part of the goal was to then replicate the program in another culture, so it's neat meeting. Um, also wanted to thank everybody for participating in strategic planning, because that's an important process, so I'll be excited to move on next steps with that. Um, we've been having conversations, uh, resumed conversations with some of our supervisors about the road for, for bio, which as you all. Remember was a commitment made, um, to get that done for their expansion and hasn't happened yet, so we're trying to figure out if there's pass forward to. Get that road complete for a lot of different reasons. And then, um, otherwise had emergency management. Meeting and there's Story County's new emergency management director, and now there's a new deputy that's been hired to backfill. Um, so staffing is now complete there at emergency management, and we'll be getting ready to do the budget workshop and. Budget approval with that entity as well, so any questions for me? Council reports. Okay, and we'll move staff, Sean.
We finished flushing hydrants last week. We had a couple that we've already gotten fixed, so. All our hydrants are in pretty good shape. Ray does a good job of painting them and. Still a few out there, but. Um, other than that. Just doing locates and keep the plant going, and I'll be gone tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. To a water conference in Corvill. So. Guys will be just fine. Have any questions?
Thank you. Go. With Harold on deck.
Um, we've just been doing storm intakes, basically. Out on South Twelfth and South Eye, we, we redid that whole intersection on the south side. Because the water always sat in there, um. And we found three more. Intakes that are bad, so Doug's out picking up leaves, that's gonna be an ongoing process, he goes to have surgery. In November, so we're kind of trying to work through that and, uh. Get plow driver in and stuff, uh, we've had concerns about lighting on faucet. So I've been going through that process and trying to find a different way to get lighting there, so. Other than that. Doug along? Any questions?
Thank you.
We've just been doing our regular operations, monitoring and maintenance as usual. Uh, we will be attending a continuing education this week at Indianola, and we get a tour of their plant, which is similar to the new plant we're getting. Which I feel will be very good for us. And, uh, we picked up the recycle flow pump that was finished for repairs. And we also are still waiting on the tower pumps that's supposed to be under warranty. And that, that's about it? Any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, just a couple of things here, um, the last month, we've had a lot of coordination between the city departments that you may not be seeing behind the scenes, whether it's working with Rhonda on the holiday event coming up. Uh, the water department's done an incredible job of fixing some hydrants that were broke. Uh, we've worked with the street department on flushing some sewers and stuff, so there's a lot of, uh, uh, working with Ryan on a lot of projects, so there's a lot of communication that's taken place that you're not really seeing, but. It's happening automatically, so it's kind of great to have that relationship with other department heads. Uh, significant for the fire department, uh, we had two firefighters injured in a fire last night. Uh, it was not our fire, it was up on the northern part of the county, um. We had, uh, a building that was just full of stuff. And, uh, winds shifted and a couple of our firefighters between maybe fatigue and, uh, some chemicals that were kind of wafted their direction with the wind change, uh. To be safe, we had them, uh, transported to the hospital, they were treated and released. Um, we've, uh. Kind of done an internal review of some of our policies and just because a building's on the ground doesn't mean we don't need to, you know, wear SCBA and stuff like that, so that's kind of a training thing we'll work through. Uh, the other thing significant, uh, our twenty-five-year-old fire engine, rural engine, um, uh, last night on the way back from the fire, uh. For some reason, the throttle just stuck full a, as they were driving, and so. Uh, we had a really experienced driver, uh, he was able to put the truck in neutral and then put it in, break it, and then, uh. By break, I mean, stop it, uh, not break it, uh, it was already broke, so, uh, but, uh, that vehicle was not operational and would not move from that point forward, so. Uh, it was towed to Central Iowa with the thoughts that we could get it repaired in Ames. Uh, Ames believes it's probably a bigger deal than they want to deal with, so now it was towed to, uh, Altoona to inland motors, uh, they believe it's some sort of motor issue. Uh, so in the interim, we're down on engine. Uh, our plans are to continue with our new engine, uh, in rural operations, it's not ideal because it's a lot less water, uh, we also have tanker operations. And our folks are trained to know to get mutual aid coming right away, so. We've adjusted our operations to make sure we're still safe, um, uh, it's just. Not what we want to do for a rural plan of attack, but, uh, we still offer the same great service for our rural folks, so. That's what we got.
Frank? Tim?
I'd just like to say thank you again for your support of our agenda item tonight, and then a couple other items in relation to the field house for progress. Interior block walls should be done this week, um, last piece of storm sewer will also be done this week. Lion will be in to set a transformer probably the end of this week or next. And then really at that point, uh, the site will probably be shut down from about the early to middle part of November until January when the building comes, and that's tentatively scheduled for January eighteenth, so. Uh, it's gonna sit quiet for, for a couple months, but, uh. Don, who is with Harold Pike Construction, he's the project superintendent on site, is very pleased with how everything has gone, so, um, it's been good to work with. Other items, uh, we'll have all the water shut off in the parks here, probably by the first of November for sure. Uh, as we get ready for winter, and then, um, senior Thanksgiving lunch in November twenty-second. So, um, we'll send out some more information to you on that, but if you want to just put that on your radar, that'd be great, so. Other questions I could answer for you?
Thanks. Brenda? Nothing from Rhonda? Hey.
Good evening. Um. Planning and zoning, we're still getting quite a few building permits coming in, um, I have another rezoning to be heard for. Plumber felt out at Sun Ridge Estates, the farm property. Would like to rezone it from R four to R five so that they can continue to park when they're ready. Um. Yeah, nothing else really with planning and zoning, um, PD stuff. Uh, Lane is still in his FTO program and doing very well with that, so they're very happy to see the progress that's being made and continuing to be made. Uh, one of the Tahos is in and being worked on, so it needs to be converted from. A, you know, normal model to a, a PD addition, so that, that's taking place. Uh, Sergeant Brandis and Sergeant Sizmady will be going to training for risk management, uh, I believe at the end of the month or beginning of next month, so. Um, any questions? On either? Nope, perfect, thanks guys.
Brian? Aaron?
Um, I am FOA conference at the end of last week. There was really business as usual, things jumping over.
Aaron, working on the budget?
Yep.
Good guess.
So, that's good, I'm working on. Budget work sheets have already been written, so. On task, department techs, we're doing. Um, we researched, we seed our work comp audit. And we estimated good, so we. Budget workshops coming up. And we'd like to attend, and I will just mention, I am FOA, um, one of the speakers, the last. Player of Parkersburg. And. It was, it was great. I think we're all teary-eyed in the room and. Inspiring, I mean, just kind of. That person, take that. But, but, council meeting.
Budget committee, stick around. Aaron?
Nothing for me?
Council, anything else before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn. I guess.
Jason, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, please say nay. And then we are adjourned.